Council, we will call this meeting to order for the record. It is June 8, 2021 at 4:33 PM. We will begin this afternoon's City Council workshop session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I would move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. There were no items moved from the consent agendas. So we'll move on to department commission reports. The first item up is item 14, Fire Department Check Presentation from Light My Fire to the Meridian Fire Department Public Education Division, and I will turn this over to Pam.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for having us tonight, and it is really my great pleasure. Many of you have gone through a check presentation with us before and in the past. And once again this year, we get to get another check presentation from this great group of Light My Fire folks. And I, there are quite a few of them in the audience tonight. If you don't mind, I'd just like to be able to say their names and just thank them personally from this. So we have Andrea from Belfour and Mary from Disaster Cleanup. She will be the one that's actually presenting. Bob from Ricketson Associate, Logan from CTR and Chris from Complete Restorations. Thank you all so much for all that you do for us. There are many, many, many more members that are a part of this group. But right now, I would like to ask Mary from Disaster Cleanup to come up. She is the president of our group. She keeps us going and she runs our dinner banquet. You know that we didn't have one, probably, you probably know this, we weren't able to do this in 2021 unfortunately because of COVID. But we were able to get 2020 in just before COVID started, and so that's what this check presentation is from. We do have 2022 booked however, and that's going to be February 11th of next year, and so we're super excited for that. So let me turn this over to Mary.
Welcome, Mary.
I'm having my Vanna Whites come up with me as well, with the big fat presentational check. Yes. It is such a huge honor and a privilege for us to be here today to give you guys some money for something that's really important in the community. Fire victims who are running out of the house and maybe they have, you know, they have their slippers on or not. And so it's a wonderful thing for us to be able to do that. And the other thing is that that fire prevention, safety and education is huge. And these two players over here are pretty amazing at what they do. And anyway, last year, we didn't do it because of COVID, but the prior year, we were able to raise and be able to donate to both you and Boise Fire, a total of $57,000. And this is the 27th, we've done it for 27 years. Bob's been here since the very beginning. And so since that point in time, over half a million dollars has been raised and donated. So with the money that we're going to be able to donate this year, it's $557,000, which is a huge accomplishment and keeping a committee together and it rolling for years, 27 years is a big deal too. So, all right, so the dollars donated are a 60-40 split between Boise and Meridian. And so Boise will receive a total of $32,400. And today we have $21,605. I always get really nervous at these things. De narrow. And so the first check I have is for Chief Bloom, and it's $12,000. The beautiful thing about that $12,000, it's automatically going to be doubled, but I think that there's more money, right Pam? A match. Okay, well, and this has, so this becomes $24,000, right, immediately, which is fantastic. The other money is for the union, and if Jaren Jones would come up for the burnout fund. So they're able to give money to people that are running out of the house. They don't have a place to stay. They may have medicine or not. And so immediately they have funds available for them, and we have $9,600. The other thing that we have here, we had a special opportunity to raise some money at our Light My Fire. And this is for the First Responder Coalition. And this is the seed money to help them get started so that our, our first responders who go through so many different things in their career and their lifetime sometimes need a little extra help with something out there to come together and help them through a challenging time. So I want to ask Chris Verkirk to come up. And for you, Chris, we have $3,000. So to close out, we're going to have a fun time, February 11th, 2022. And we want you guys to be able to come out and celebrate with us because we're going to be able to get back together again. And we haven't come up with any type of theme yet, but we've done Pirates and Gypsies, we've done Amore, we've done Fiesta, we've done hippie themes. So if anybody has a great idea, cast it out because we're going to make it happen. And that's a save the date. Mark your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Truly appreciate all that the Light My Fire does for our community. It's amazing. So thank you again. So next up on is a community risk reduction presentation. Herb, the time is yours.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention and letting us be here tonight. My name is Herb Griffin. I'm with the Public Education Division of the Fire Department. And it's my pleasure today to present you with an overview of a new document that we have created and finally gotten completed, and that is the Community Risk Assessment Report. So this was a project we did during COVID. And we were trying to get it out at the end of the year with the change in leadership. We held off on it. Once Chief Bloom came on board, we were able to get it completed and get it out to you. And so today I'm going to give you the kind of high flyover overview of what this document is and what it's about. This is strictly from a Fire Department viewpoint because it's all based on data that we have used and for the calls that we're going. So it's not a whole city, but eventually we'll have to get there and work with other departments and see what other needs that we are missing that are happening within the city when we look at risk assessment. Technology starts to fail us. There we go. So the purpose of this document is to identify areas where we as a Fire Department and as a city can better reduce risk for our citizens. We have completed this assessment using our response data from 2016 to 2020. And there's a quote from Vision 2020, which is a subdivision of the National Fire Protection Administration, says that the fire service exists not only to respond to emergency incidents, but also to proactively prevent or mitigate the impact of such incidents within their communities. And so this is us trying to look forward and be proactive as opposed to reactive. Any emergency services in the United States were really reactive agencies. Somebody has an emergency, they call 911 and we go. This is us trying to get out in front of it and being proactive with some of the things that we see on a regular basis and are starting to identify those. The goal of this document is basically to be a stepping stone document from which we can build a comprehensive community risk plan. This will be in step with our strategic and capital improvement plans. And we'll be working together. There are other documents, and I know the chief has expressed the goal for eventually working towards accreditation. This will be one of the documents that will be used in that process. Basically, this assessment is broken down into seven areas, and basically we're telling the story of Meridian, Ohio. So we're talking about the area, the people, the city itself, and the Fire Department.
Just click anywhere on the screen to get that pop-up off of there. I mean with your mouse.
Okay, so we have a breakdown of community information. Basically, it tells the city's story, where we are located, who we are. It's very basic. It talks about our geography and climate, what kind of municipal organization we have, what services we provide, a little bit about our history, some of our demographic profile and our housing and zoning. The next section is on the Fire Department, and again, it's just a basic description of who we are as the Fire Department here in Meridian, what services we currently provide to our citizens, what our budget is and what our service demand is. And we get into specific Fire Department information, and this is information that we have pulled from the data over the last five years. It tells what types of incidents we're going to, where those incidents are happening within our jurisdiction. And we have a further breakdown within that section, talking specifically about fire and emergency medical services because those are the two big ones. You know, fire is the big one everyone knows about, and EMS is the one that we do the most of. So those are important to kind of break down those different types of incidents so that we have an understanding of what types of calls we're going to and where we can put future preventative education and equipment, things like that, so that we can go through there. So we have some hazards or some issues that we have already identified. These are items that we are currently working on, and we have, we have been working on for some time. Some of them are older, some of them are very new. But one of them is our smoke alarm program. We have a very robust smoke alarm program here in the city. We provide batteries, smoke alarms, we change batteries and smoke alarms for citizens within our community. And there's a, a big need for this in our community, especially with our older adults, and they really appreciate this, this service. I go out four or five times a day to these types of calls, and they are always so appreciative of the fact that we come out to them and take care of this, and it's a no cost service to them. They're very happy with that. We talk about older adult safety, slip and fall, things like that, educational programs that we're trying to get involved in and get started and working with the Senior Advisory Committee and the Senior Center on trying to make sure that we're providing these things. What we found in our research over time is when a senior gets injured, that's when they lose, when they lose their mobility, that's when they lose their independence. And so it's really important that we teach them how to stay healthy, how to stay limber, how to stay independent as long as possible. We have our building inspection program. This is where our inspect, fire inspectors go out and inspect the buildings that the public is in every day. When you walk into a building in City Meridian, the expectation of the public is that building is safe. Our inspector's job is to make sure that building is safe so that, you know, people in there will be able to get out. Again, a lot of, a lot of history for the fire service is built on something bad happened in the past. And so now we need to set codes and ordinances and make, make it better so we won't have it happen again. And then we briefly talked about our school safety program. We are part of the Idaho Standard Command and Response System, along with the Meridian Police Department and several other school districts, other state agencies. Obviously, we, we tried, we hope that we're insulated from these things, but recent events that have happened in the state have kind of shown us that even here in Idaho, we are not isolated from violence in our schools, and so we need to have a good response plan to be able to all be on the same page, all be talking the same language. And we are part of that, and we've identified that as an important thing that we have to do within our community. We've identified some natural, natural hazards that we have here in the state of Idaho and within the Treasure Valley. These include earthquakes, severe weather, wildfires and flooding. Very simple, but just being able to identify that we have these issues and know that we'll have to deal with them if, if something major transpires. We have technological and human hazards that we've identified, obviously hazardous materials, utility failure, transportation. We have two airports close by us. We're in the flight path class. So I came from San Diego and in the late seventies, PSA jet was flying into the airport there and was struck by a small plane and crashed down in a neighborhood that, you know, thought they'd never have to deal with an airline incident, but they had to. And so, you know, we have to always kind of be prepared for those type of things. We have a railroad that runs right next to us here at City Hall. It cuts the city in half. If we had an incident with a long train, it could seriously impact emergency responses. It'll definitely impact traffic and could impact other services. So we have to take that into consideration. We have the I-84, and then of course the state highways 1655 and 2026 that all run through our jurisdiction. So all of those things could have events take place that could impact our services either or impact just, just general happenings within the city. And we have security hazards, obviously civil disorder, terrorism. We are right next door to the state Capitol. The possibility of this incident spilling over into our city exists. Most likely, what's going to happen is they're going to need our resources. So we have to plan for this. We have to be ready for, and we have to have an idea that if, if this happens, what are we going to do? And that's why this was identified. The final section is conclusions and recommendations. This is an area where based on the data shown within the document, we feel that improvements can be made or we want to continue to work on things that we already have in place to help reduce the further risk to our citizens. And there are a couple of specific ones that we would like to kind of point out to you. You will probably be hearing about some of these later on as, as the administrative team kind of builds what they want to do. We're looking at that CIP plan. We're looking at the strategic plan. Some of these might be coming up, so we want to make you aware of them. Number one is hiring a community risk coordinator that will be in executive position, that will be in charge of coordinating all the community risk within the Fire Department, liaisoning with all other departments within the city and within the, the county and the state. So that's a, a big and important position that they're looking for later on. Obviously, hiring more personnel, public education, very important, fire prevention and administration. These are the non-sexy positions. It's very easy to come to you and say, hey, we need a fire engine and we need six, nine firemen to, to cover that fire engine. But these are the positions that we can't justify. We can't say, hey, we're not getting there in, in five minutes. You know, we're getting this many calls and we don't have enough resources to cover everything. These are the positions that kind of work in the background. They go out in the community and they work in the community. It's very hard for us to say, hey, we prevented this many fires last year or this much dollar loss or save this many lives because of our prevention and education programs. It's just very difficult to, to put a number on those types of things, but it is a valuable resource and, and they're valuable people that we are going to need in the future. And then of course, alternative response vehicles. This is, these are types of vehicles that we're planning for the future, what, what we want our response services to look like. Not everything needs a million dollar fire truck. So what can we do to provide better services for different types of calls? And one of the things that we're looking for in the future. And again, this is just to make you aware that we're thinking about these things and we're looking at them and we're looking at them for the future. There will be some costs with some of these items. Obviously, anytime that you have personnel that is increased cost, anytime you want vehicles, it costs increased cost. But there are sources within the community, public, private partnerships, grants. And of course, there will be times when we'll have to come to council and ask for additional funds. So just making you aware that these things are out there on the horizon as we're talking about community risk reduction at least puts it in your head so that you're not shocked when we show up and, and ask for something. Final thing is, we want to talk about what's next. This community risk document will need to be written. We've already begun gathering data for that document. There are a number of documents, a standards of coverage document, the community risk plan, things like that, that are already starting. They're already working on the strategic plan up at, at administration that will coordinate with the city strategic plan that has already been adopted. So we're, we're working to move through all of that. We're looking to hire a consultant to come in and finalize the plan and look for ways to fund the needs of the document, see where we are missing, what, what we're blind to, so they can kind of see, hey, here's some things that are going on. And then we're constantly looking for new ways to try and keep our community safe. And that was part of the emphasis of getting this started is that we could be more proactive and look out to the future and try and see what our future needs are going to be so that we can identify them and deal with them before they become response issues. So at this time, Chief Bloom and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Herb. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Herb. Very interesting presentation and appreciated the report.
I thought the wildfire risk section was really pertinent right now because you've had a lot of development in South Meridian. Longer Ridge, we're, we're taking on wildfire risk in that kind of urban. Wildland interface, I guess is what you guys call it, but. Was curious if, if you think we'll be doing additional research on that particular risk to help mitigate it.
That's definitely a risk that we're addressing. One of the, one of the issues with the growth that we're having, we're pushing into a lot of those urban lands and we're starting to bump into other agencies, and so. We're losing a lot of that wildland area, but it is still definitely a risk, especially in the southwest corner of the city. So it's definitely something that we have to address, and we need to address what our resources are, what our water resources are down there. You know, what types of fires have we had there in the past, what type of fires could we see in the future as we start putting homes in those areas, what's the, what's the danger? So definitely, it's something that that's on our radar and it's something that we think about and we really start gearing up. In the spring to get ready for summer season because we know that there's a possibility that could happen.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Councilor Schrader.
I was also just curious, as you envision, you know, maybe this is also a question for Chief Bloom, but. As you're envisioning this kind of risk coordinator position or enhancement to that role. How, how would that? How would the future reports interface with other departments in the city, something I'd be curious about? If you ask Public Works, what are the greatest risks from their perspective, they have a whole set of them. Police probably have their whole set of risks. Which is curious how you might coordinate with those different departments.
One of, one of the best ways to, to work inter, intercity from department to department. Is to get representatives that have authority to make decisions for their departments. And get them together and start working on on identifying things. Because we'll, you know, you can lay out, hey, here are some things that we see that are going on. Police will come in and hey, well, these are some things we see that are going on. You start laying those over each other, and then you'll be able to start talking about them, how do we address this? You know, what does it need to address this, and we just continue to. To work in that way, and and it has to be a collect, a collective effort. We have to collaborate together. Because it's important that we as a city do this because it affects us as a city, it's not just the fire department. But, you know. It doesn't mean we're asserting the lead on it, but it, but it's something that we're doing now because we've identified this as a need for us. And we believe it's something that should go out to the rest of the city at some point, and probably with the community plan. Chief, am I correct? That we would, we would be working towards meeting with the other city. Departments and finding out what they have going on also and working together with that.
Makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Kavner.
First off, the report is great.
Thank you.
There's a lot of meat on the bones there, I feel like we could have a whole presentation on some of the stuff that's in there. One item that caught my attention was the youth fire setting. Prevention and intervention program as a service that's offered by Meridian Fire.
That is correct.
And you'll have to forgive me, that's not, I'm not aware of that program, I was hoping you could just give me a little flavor of what that does and.
I'm going to have Pam come up, Pam, I know about it, but Pam really understands it and she can answer that question much better than I can.
So the youth juvenile, well, it's a youth fire setter program, you may have remembered the name juvenile fire setter. Because that's what we always called it up until probably within the last eighteen months. And we're moving away from the word juvenile to just youth because they're getting younger and younger and, and we don't want to. Across the board nationally, they don't want to think of juvenile delinquents, this is a youth problem, right? So essentially, what our program is, is an education program. So when we have a child who has started a fire. We work either directly with the parents, we are notified either by parents, we're notified by the responding crews contact us. Or if they get involved through the police department or through the juvenile justice system. We're contacted, and then we have a screening tool that we use that is out of the state of Oregon, they have a really robust. Program out of that through the state fire marshal's office there. And so we've adopted that, it's actually been that, it's actually the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association who has adopted that document. And that document allows us to ask a series of questions in a way. To help us determine whether or not we have a child here who we think is going to be a repeat offender. Be lighting often, right? And we've had those, or if we have somebody who is genuinely just. Curious about fire and just simply needs a little bit of education. And so after we get through with the screening documentation, then we sit down with the family and with the child itself, there's that educational component. Our fire safety center that Herb and I work out of, it has a burnout room in it, if you've never been there, I really want to invite you to come. It's the only facility in the state that has this. And it's a, it's a room that it is a, it shows the progression of fire in a bedroom. And so we utilize that room to show children what would happen should their room catch on fire, they lose their toys, these kind of things, right? So with that, the screening tool, videos that we use, and then additional education. Prior to any family member leaving us, if they've had a juvenile or a youth who has lit a fire. Prior to them leaving us, they will have an opportunity to do a home escape plan. They'll have an opportunity to understand and get new smoke alarms if their smoke alarms do not operate. And they, and they also have, we've got some automatic door closers that will shut bedroom doors automatically. Because just depending where these children are in the screen, right? There are some that are definitely at a risk, and if the family cannot get this child into, let's say, a. A live-in facility for additional help, right? We need to ensure that we're doing the best job that we can to ensure that family is safe, so that's the program. We screen, I would say, you know, it just, it fluctuates, it really fluctuates, but between ten to twelve children a year. Some years it's been as high as maybe twenty twenty five. Schools call us, so we get, we get called from all over the place, and so that's what the program is, sorry, it takes so much time.
I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Kavner.
There's the, the portion of the, the assessment talks about false call times, and I'm just curious, does the. Amount of false call times that we see in Meridian, does that fall in line with the national average? And and maybe.
I, I don't know, I didn't do that research. What, what, what caught my attention was the number of calls that, that we get dispatched to and canceled because they're either false calls or. They're good intent calls, they don't know who else to call, so they call nine one one and we come out, so. That's an issue where I see Pam and I are really important and and that education on when do you call nine one one, what is an emergency? Those are things that that have caught our attention, and as we did the research, we identified a few of those things, but. Again, this is, this is part of why this document is so important to get out there because. We're starting to recognize, hey, look, if we look at our data here, some things that are kind of odd, I, I don't know what the national numbers are on those, I wish I did. But it did catch my attention as I was doing the research, and so it is something that I'm sure we'll, we will be addressing and and looking at ways that we can. Bring that number down, because. When those crews are responding, they're no longer available. So, you know, we want those crews to be available for the true emergencies. So they can deal with those true emergencies, and so if we can keep the number of false calls down, we know the wear and tear on the equipment. All that stuff, that would be ideal for us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilor Kavner.
I agree with you, I think that there's, there's so many things that are captured in the report that some. We have some control over and some that we don't have any control over, I think that's a place that we do have some potential control over. Do you know, Herb, or maybe this is a question for the chief, do those call times, even if they're a false call? Does that still contribute to the average call time for, for a truck?
We're still responding to those incidents, all that means is that when. When the engine got there, they were canceled. Or so they still went, they still got dispatched, they still responded, and then. That time is calculated until they go available again, so. Whether they're on scene and it's a false call or it's a good intent call. They didn't really need any help, all those things that they, they, they still are, we're still running, turning wheels. And running those crews out, and we're keeping track of that time.
Council, any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is from our community development department and presentation on the land use entitlement analysis. Turn this over to Mr. McClure and I'll let you introduce Leila.
Aaron, City Council, thank you for having us here today, I'm joined by Cameron Ariel, Tori Cleary and Leila Klauffensee. Got it. Leila is an exceptionally talented MPA student with Boise State University, she's recently helped us do some analysis. Entitlements, what are the aggregate decisions, what are the results of the aggregate decisions we made over the last several years? She'll be presenting that to you shortly. But I do want to note that this is part of a larger series of work we've done, the demographic summary we prepared for you recently, the land use and development report. Those are all sort of feed into the vision of sort of where, where we've been and what we've been doing over the last several years. Before I turn this over to Leila, I'd just like to note that if you have any questions that require additional research or analysis, we can come back to you with that in the future. And that this analysis is for your benefit and there's no specific ask or request here. However, we do think some of these themes and topics are important, and we would like to continue these conversations with you. Have any additional questions for me, then I would turn this over to Leila.
Okay, hi, everyone, so yeah, like Brian said, I've been working as an intern. The last semester at City of Meridian, which has been great, it's been all on Zoom. And yeah, so I'm excited to give the presentation on my report today. So let's just get started. Oh, and so for context, I actually grew up in Meridian, so it's been really nice to be able to see things from a planning perspective. After, you know, running the streets and yeah, growing up here. Okay, so. My purpose here today is to first summarize the main points of my report. Then highlight some broad development trends. And what I'm trying to give you here is the forest from the trees perspective of what the last three, three years of development has looked like in the city of Meridian. Um, so my report covers rezones, conditional use permits, commercial areas and mixed use areas. For the sake of time today, I'm only going to be focusing on rezones, conditional use permits and mixed use areas. Throughout the report or the presentation, I'll be referring to commercial and residential land. And when I say commercial, I mean general neighborhood, community zones, as well as industrial and office zones. Residential means anything that has a house on it, so anything from the low density R two zone to the high density R forty zone. Okay, so the first section, the first of three sections is the rezone section, so we're looking at rezones over the last three years, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. So when you look at net acreage gain and loss through these zones in the last three years, there are three main themes that that come to light. The first is that there's an increase in residential density. So you can see on the left-hand side of the bar chart that R four has lost forty four acres over the last three years. On the right-hand side, you can see that R forty, R eight, R fifteen, all higher density residential zones have all gained. Residential, or gained acreage over the last three years through rezones. So the second main theme trend is that there's been an overall gain in residential land, so you can see that. R forty, R eight and R fifteen have all gained more, have exceeded the losses here, so the loss is forty four, and then. The residential zones have, have exceeded that. The third trend is that there's been a net loss of commercial land. So as you can see, there's only been eight acres gained of residential land, or sorry, commercial land over the last three years. While there's been losses in general, commercial, industrial, office and community commercial zones. So the next question in rezones is always, if you're rezoning land, where are you rezoning it to, or what are you rezoning it to? So the graph on the left shows the acreage loss through rezones over the last three years. And then the table on the right shows. Zones and where or what zone they're being rezoned to, so there's two themes I want to point out here. You're seeing commercial be rezoned to residential, so. You look at CC as well as CG, you're seeing largely that commercial land being rezoned to residential zones. The, the next theme, the next thing I want to point out is the industrial zones are often being. Rezoned to commercial, general commercial, so. In this case, over the last three years, all industrial land that was rezoned went to general commercial. So the two main takeaways that I had after looking at the rezone data from the last three years. Is first that rezones are increasing residential land and density. So when you calculate net acreage, residential zones gained sixty one acres over the last three years. At the same time, rezones have reduced commercial land by sixty one acres. Which is kind of serendipitous that it would be the same acreage, but yes, that's just the way it worked out. Okay, so the second section that I'll be speaking on today are, is on conditional use permits. So. There have been fifty two conditional use permits granted over the last three years. This is a pie chart of CUPs by acreage, so the three largest CUPs by acreage are first schools. So this includes new schools as well as school modifications or additions. The next big recipient of CUPs are multifamily developments, and then third, storage facilities. So in the report, I have five major trends that I point out. The first is that four public schools receive CUPs. This is kind of expected, the population is growing, there needs to be more schools, so. That's not necessarily surprising, but definitely because of the amount of acreage going to schools, I wanted to point that out. Second apartment or multifamily CUPs were mostly approved in residential zones, so there was only one approved in a commercial zone. Which I was not expecting to see. Next, there were six daycare CUPs and like schools, you kind of expect to see that with the growth in population, I just wanted to point that out. And the two I want to talk a little bit more in depth on today. Is first that there was a high number of CUPs in industrial zones, and then second, there was a high number of storage facility CUPs. So let's start with storage facilities. Storage facilities received the largest amount of land in commercial zones when you break out. Commercial CUPs on their own, so that's what that pie chart shows. They, so storage facilities took up eighteen acres of commercial land in the last three years. This reflects a larger national trend, demand for storage facilities is increasing across the nation. Private construction spending on new storage facilities across the nation grew from two hundred forty one million in twenty eleven to nearly five billion in twenty eighteen. And following that growth in demand is also regulation, so. A, a lot of major cities across the nation have put in more regulation. But the one I I'm pointing out here is New York City, who in twenty eighteen cited a lack of space. Displacement of businesses that produce high quality jobs and a negative impact on the aesthetics. For why they put stricter regulation on storage facilities being built in industrial areas. We've also seen this, this growing interest in regulation on storage facilities in the Treasure Valley in twenty nineteen. The city of Nampa placed a moratorium on new storage unit construction. It was a five-month moratorium and the purpose was to update code on what the storage facilities should look like, as well as the approval process on. On how like city council or planning and zoning commission would be able to approve those new storage facilities. In Meridian, there are currently seventeen existing storage facilities and four more in construction. In the last three years, there's been seven new storage facilities approved through CUPs. One was in a residential zone and six were in commercial zones, so that eighteen acres I talked about a little bit earlier. One of those storage facilities in a commercial zone was, was approved in a commercial zone set aside for office space. Okay. So the second trend I wanted to, to talk about today is the high number of CUPs in industrial zones. So there were two. There were two gyms that I want to focus on today, Gracie Fighting Academy and Rock and Armor, which were both approved in twenty twenty. They were both approved in industrial areas, as I said before. And when I looked at the industrial area, I found that there were already existing recreational facilities. So in each industrial zone, there were already three existing recreational facilities, and so these. Recreational facilities would be the fourth. And what that does is it, it, it puts a commercial enterprise in an industrial area and essentially displaces that industrial business. At the same time, it attracts other commercial-like enterprises like other recreational facilities, so. So that, that displacement as well as that attraction of other commercial activities. so that that displacement as well as that attraction of other commercial activities over time ends up in commercializing the industrials area. The the other thing is that there are a lot of secondary impacts to putting commercial properties in like increased traffic in an industrial zone as well as limiting the types of heavy industry that are able to go in in a place that has children. I actually grew up going to a gymnastics studio in that area. So so I definitely know like it's it would be uncomfortable for me as a child or a parent bringing a child to an area that has heavy industry happening in the same place. And then also just wanted to point out that this trend is also true for churches in industrial areas. Okay. So the two key takeaways from this conditional use permit section is first that conditional use permits have allowed a high number of storage facilities, especially in commercial zones. Second, there's been a high number of CUPs approved in industrial zones and over time that that may commercialize the industrial zone. So the third and last section that I want to focus on or I want to talk about today are mixed use areas. Okay, so the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan defines mixed use areas as places that residents can live, shop and work in a close geographic area. As a resident of Meridian, I am excited about mixed use areas. I think they're great. I would love to live in one. So so that's kind of the perspective I'm coming at this from. The map on the right shows the future land use map of the city and the brown areas as well as the diagonal orange crossing lines are different mixed use areas in the city. So when I was looking at analyzing mixed use areas in the city, I was looking at three main things. First, does the mixed use area provide a family wage job? Can you really work in a mixed use area and support yourself? Second, is there connectivity between different land uses? Are you able to get to your workplace and then to your grocery store or your, you know, your retail shopper? And then also get back home and in an easy enough manner. And then third, is there a sense of place? Do you want to live there? Is there a sense of community there? Okay, so this is the forest from the trees part, so bear with me. I will do my best to explain. So the city of Meridian Land Use Report has a table called fixed or sorry, future mixed use assumptions. So there are seven different mixed use zones in the city as well as Old Town. So each mixed use zone has this different ideal ratio of residential, office, commercial and civic land. When you add office plus commercial, you get the total percentage of non-residential land. So that's what this table shows. So for example, mixed use neighborhood, which is the first row, shows 50% is ideally going to be 50% residential, 30% office, 10% commercial and 10% civic. The second row, mixed use community is ideally going to be 35% residential, 25% office, 30% commercial and 10% civic. So there is, there is slight differentiation between each mixed use zone. So when I tried to bring the data together and analyze this, I first took this table and then put it into pie chart format. So that's what that center column is, is that's your North Star, that is exactly, that is the ideal. That's what you're shooting for, the target land use ratio. The bar chart on the left hand side is the current allocated land in that zone across the city. So in mixed use community, which I'm using as an example today, the report has all the different mixed use zones there. So for mixed use community, it's 27% remain, it has 27% remaining undeveloped land. It is 45% non-residential and 28% residential. And the it's in ballpark range of the target land use ratios I, from my perspective. The remaining undeveloped land is quite low, so you would expect to see that these totals would would closer reflect the ideal, the target land use ratio. When you look at the right hand column, that's the three year impact trend. So those are entitlements from 2018 to 2020. So over the last three years, there's been 223 acres entitled in that zone. And 43% of that was commercial, 47% of that was residential and 10% of that was mixed commercial. So if you remember here, it, the, this table asks to produce a certain percentage of office land in your mixed use area. So oftentimes in the city, commercial and office land is mixed. So I called that mixed commercials, anything that had some sort of office space for either a small business or a doctor's office, something like that. I put it into that category. So when I look at this series of graphs, what I see is is that, you know, the percentage of non-residential land to residential land is not, is not very much off the target. However, when you look at what's been entitled in the last three years, your mixed commercial, the places that you really think that your family wage job opportunities are going to come is quite low. And if it was low in the last three years, it's likely that there, there's been some that low cases in the last years before the, before the last three years that I'm analyzing. So I would look into the the percentage of non-residential land and really understand what kind of commercial opportunities we're providing our residents in these mixed use areas. Okay. Um, oh, and the other point I wanted to make here is that these kinds of broad scale analyses for mixed use areas are important because they tell you how close you are getting to the target ratio. However, they're not telling you if residents can live, work and shop in a close area. So you can only do that through a case study analysis. So I looked at two different cases in the city, one on Eagle and Overland and one on Eagle and Ustick. So the mixed use area on Eagle and Overland is 42% parking and roads. And that number is a little bit low because the Villasfor and the commercial area that's adjacent to Villasfor has not been developed yet. So I wasn't able to calculate the parking spaces in that area. So it's, it's really likely half of this mixed use area is parking and the mixed use area is larger than the portion I analyzed. But again, I was, I was working with the close geographic area definition. So I just want to note that. The other thing in this case study that I wanted to note is that commercial services are likely where you're going to find your family wage job opportunities. But when you compare that to commercial services as well as the parking that takes up a large portion of this mixed use area, I think that that job opportunity may be lacking in this mixed use area. And the parking really breaks up the connectivity. So it's, it's difficult for for residents on a hot summer day to traverse across an asphalt area to get to their shopping destinations. So those are the kind of two barriers I see in this case study. So another case study I looked at was Eagle and Overland. So on Eagle and Overland, I really think that this is a well-developed mixed use area. There's a lot of exciting developments going in and great job opportunities with Norco and ICCU and other catalyst projects going in. And this residential percentages are is is high right now largely because there's a lot of old farmhouse houses in that area. So so that may change in the future. So because ICCU and Norco are going in, there was an opportunity for residential development to go in too. And I know that there's been a proposal for potentially 360 new apartment units going in off Overland. And really well-developed. I think that really the biggest barrier here to better develop this mixed use area would be, would be traffic that it's probably the biggest area to connectivity in this case. So the key takeaway from this mixed use area or all mixed use areas is really that each mixed use area has its own set of challenges to, in order to get to the the goal of living, shopping and working in a close geographic area. So I, the biggest takeaway for me was that it's always important to contextualize developments in mixed use areas. Because again, there, there are unique challenges to each area. So I hope that kind of was clear and I will stand for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perel, welcome back, Councilman Pro.
Thank you for your presentation. You are a fantastic public speaker.
Oh, thank you.
Very much appreciated. I love, I love this data. This would be helpful really for for every one of our land use applications to have this big picture idea, especially with the mixed use as it relates to the, you know, the entire geographic location. But one thing I was going to recommend, if I don't know if you're continuing work with this project, but one thing that would have been helpful is to see what the percentage of the entire. So when you were breaking down where, you know, what, what was ideal and then what we actually approved as far as industrial, commercial, not with a mixed use, but but the the slides before that. What's the percentage of our entire industrial? In other words, we lost so many acres in industrial, 61 acres. Well, what, what percentage is 61 of the entire amount of industrial in the city of Meridian? And I think that statistic would also help so that we, you know, because obviously we are going to, we have quite a bit more residential. So if we have, if we lose 150 acres of residential, well, that's a much smaller percentage of our total residential. Whereas 61 acres of industrial might be a much larger percentage of our total industrial. So that stat would would be really helpful too.
Yeah.
And but thank you very much for doing this. This is, this is fantastic. It's very, very insightful.
Yeah, and to answer your question, I'm not sure if Brian has something that he would like to say. But I want to say that the land use report does have that data in graph format. Yes, okay.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Lila, thank you. I was so floored by your report. It was like a bombshell, honestly. I think it was great. It was very independent and I thought it gave us a really critical look at what we're doing and the decisions that we're making. And I think it's an opportunity for us to really like collectively take a look at what can we do to help bolster our, you know, family wage job zones and how can we take a look at our storage? Storage happening. This was amazing and I appreciate all your work on it. I appreciate planning for bringing it forward. But I think it's important for us to all take, take this to heart and I'd love to see some future recommendations to address some of the things that came up in the report personally. I thought it was very insightful and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you so much.
And if I just piggyback on that, because one of my questions for staff moving forward is are there policy related decisions that we can make for our residential that would reduce the need for the storage units, you know, as compared to what New York City did with higher regulations or Nampa with moratorium? You know, is there something we're missing for our residential component? Or do people here just have too many motorcycles, boats, ATVs, UTVs that quite frankly, they're going to use the space no matter how it's provided on their property. That may be unique to Idaho that we can't create properties big. But that, that was at least one of my questions from a policy standpoint is can you really address that through our residential standards or not? Maybe not. So no, no, no question other than thank you and very thought provoking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
I may, may dovetail on that because Lila, the, the presentation was great that you provided a significant amount of historical analysis. Case studies I thought were very eye opening. There were some observations made, but it fell short of making recommendations. And I'm just curious, you've got a magic wand, what are the recommendations you would make to us as a result of the data that you so eloquently shared with us today?
Oh, that's a good question. So I, I obviously am very aware that, you know, this is, this is a three month project for me. So, so, you know, there, I may have blind spots, so I wanted to go into it with that, that understanding. Thankfully, the planning staff has been just really incredible and helped me through this process. I think probably first and foremost, just, I think this kind of analysis is really easy to understand as a resident. I mean, it's difficult to understand what zones mean and, and that, that was a big learning barrier for me in the first month. So so having a little bit more accessibility to the data and then continuing the research kind of the case study type research, I think, would be helpful from, I mean, I'm speaking from a residence point of view right now. But yeah, that's probably just the, the main thing I have right now unless, yeah, so we'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Do you think that we have? Do you think we've got data from your work that would help us answer the question as to the mixed use areas? I think that was really insightful what you provided. And and sometimes what we struggle with in those larger areas and your two case studies are good examples of it is the sequence at which different land uses come on board. And it seems like we might have the data that would help us understand for a larger mixed use community area when we entitle part of it as a certain land use that that we could use your expected ratios of the various land uses in the mixed use region as a whole. And for example, if it's 100 acres and you've entitled 60 acres utilizing this one land, you show these two land uses that in order to return back to the ratios that we want for the mixed use region as a whole, the remaining property needs to be more focused on commercial, less residential, somehow utilizing the ratios that you've described because we really wrestle with that. Folks will come in as the first and, you know, it's a classic residential is the one we see most. And they, in essence, kind of gobble up that percentage of of expected residential, which sort of hamstrings, if we're going to be consistent to our ultimate goal, hamstrings our ability to really treat the remaining portions as mixed use, they're sort of stuck with what's left. So.
Yeah. Um, I will say that I tried to take a stab at your question. I was wondering if you had larger developments, would they provide more commercial land or at least like a and more even distribution? I don't think I really got an answer to that. I tried to answer that question and I, and I can't say I came to any conclusive results. I think there would need to be more data to come to, to an answer. But but I did have the same kind of thought that you did there.
So if I could real quick follow up on that, the Eagle Overland was a good example where you probably have the data that says in order to return to what we want to be the distribution of land uses here, the remaining unentitled property needs to be you know, 70, 30 commercial in order to end up at you know, 40, 30 with the anticipated ultimate ratios. So to Councilman Kavanagh's question, that maybe there's some data that can help us when we're considering applications for the remaining acreage.
Yeah, I'm, I'll let Brian tackle this question.
I think your data gets us there though.
Okay.
It does.
That's good to know.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, I think Lila's presented an excellent template that the staff can use moving forward for providing a bigger picture snapshot of what you're looking at when you're looking at smaller entitlements within mixed use areas. So yes, the Lila's release analysis here was three years, 2018, 2020. So there's not a lot of time there for the lens of, some of our mixed use areas have been developing for decades. So we don't have that for this necessarily citywide analysis, but I think we can look at that in silos for, for individual areas of mixed use through individual entitlements moving forward. Certainly it's feasible anyways.
Sure, that'd be a great tool.
And I don't know if unless I missed it or didn't understand it, but when, when we looked at the breakdown percentages that you provided, but when you did, when you did focus in on those two areas, we had a parking and street. Is there a reason why that wasn't assigned to the appropriate residential or commercial area? Because it, there's no parking and street that I saw in the, you know, identifying the previous chart. So if you've reallocated that, how would that have changed those numbers?
So when you look at it, you can't find that. So what I did is I went through and I clicked and I calculated the, the area manually. So and, and again, there's no way to, like the ICCU Norco proper developments are multi-story. So I think that's another thing that's not captured when you're just looking at zones, what's commercial, what's not? Because those, those multi-story buildings are going to provide so much more retail opportunities as well as job opportunities than the single story that you see in the case study one.
Mr. Mayor, just to understate the amount of work that Lila did here, as she said, she had to do that, allow that manually. When we do a large entitlement process, we typically get, we'll get number of residential units they want to do because that's the first thing they're going to do. The commercial layout. The commercial layout, the commercial design, all that usually comes later and it just sort of happens through very incremental, much smaller changes over a longer period of time. And so we don't, we don't collect a lot of that with entitlement process currently. Um, it was a very manual process that she did to give you that information.
I guess my point, I assume that some of that parking should have been reallocated to a commercial or residential number to bring up those to an appropriate, because. Parking is required in your residential, just like your parking is required in your commercial. We don't, when we have the INU in the chart, we don't say forty percent of your project should be roads and parking. Otherwise it would skew those. So again, is, if we're going to look at it and apply it, need to account for that somehow into the residential commercial. But I completely understand square footage here versus, versus vertical impacts everything. In what your numbers ultimately are. So.
I, I take your point now. I, I'm sorry.
For the future, if there's value.
Councilman Holden. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Leela, thanks for your presentation. Very useful. And, uh, just in kind of an observation, you know, and you gave the example of the CUPs in industrial zones. And industrial zones to me are the places where we make stuff. I mean, they are job creators. Can be a little messy, a little loud, but you need those areas because people are creating and it's, you know, value added to the community and jobs and products. And so with those CUPs, I, I was just kind of wondering is, is that those facilities are very large? And they fit from a structure standpoint in industrial area. But yet do we allow them to go there? Because while they fit from a look perspective. And it might be easier to do it there than if they go into mixed commercial or mixed use. Because while they really don't fit the look and feel of those areas. So it's just one of those observations that go, hmm, we'll have to kind of watch for that to see if that's. Part of that process. Of course, location always plays into most everything people want to do and be in the right location and traffic. Plans and whatnot. But so that was interesting to, to see that and kind of think about, maybe we have to pay attention to that. That are we making it too difficult for large structure facilities to go into some of these mixed use areas because they don't fit from a, an aesthetic process? So anyway, something to think about.
I think, thank you very much for your point. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, on the mixed use point. It did, it did really make me worry, to be honest, like that section especially, just are we missing something when we're looking at applications that's qualitative in nature? You know, is there a way to, to try to dig into? More analytically, what does that live, work and play philosophy need to look like? Uh, it's hard because it's something that, you know, you, you could point out like, for example, if a huge proportion of a project ends up being. Parking and asphalt. Sure. How, how does that create an integrated set of uses, right? It, it's hard. Every project's different. So I guess it, it just was food for thought. It's something to contemplate maybe a little bit more if we're missing something on the mixed use.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Schrader and then Councilman Hoglen, you guys sort of have the same point, but just. For consideration, when, when's the last time we had a development application for a commercial project in a mixed use area? That showed a secondary or tertiary location for some of those lesser gems, daycares. When was the last time you saw an application that didn't have a pad site or a power center on it? We don't, we don't get those spaces when we do those entitlement periods. And so you never see those areas in there. And so they had no place to go but to an industrial section. You're absolutely right, though.
Council on any further questions? Thank you very much. A fine product of West State's school district. Yeah, I think your mom and dad would be proud.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much for your time. This was, this was enjoyable.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item seventeen, which is a community development department, community development department fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred for professional services related to the creation of the. Lender Urban Renewal District. Um, Cameron, you're going to talk about both seventeen and eighteen together.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we'll, uh, address both of them together. Uh, would like to just take the opportunity to, uh, publicly thank Leela for her efforts. It was a pleasure working with her and I think we all benefited from, from her efforts. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, always a pleasure to be with you. This is just a, a, a quick budget amendment to. Fund the, the needed costs for, uh, the lender district, uh, which its primary purpose is the lender overpass and, and the funding of that. And then of course, the, uh, attaching or, um, attending MOA is for a reimbursement agreement with MDC. So in a nutshell, that is, that is what is before you and, uh, certainly can talk to any other, of, of the details that are in the memo, but that is it. Uh, short and sweet.
Council questions or Cameron? Okay. Short and sweet it was.
And sweet. Thank you.
So with that, do I have a motion? It could be Mr. Borden still.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve the fiscal year two, twenty twenty-one budget amendment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred for professional services. Related to the creation of the Lender Urban Renewal District.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
If not, call the roll. You can, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Stay.
Cavanagh.
I.
Perrow.
I.
Schrader.
I.
Hoglen.
I.
All ayes, motion carries. Item eighteen, I, I don't know, Tori, if there's anything you want to add regarding that or not.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I'll just provide a little clarity as to why there's an initial MOA that you have to approve and an amended MOA. When MDC first took this to their board for approval, we were considering some other areas that the city would maybe be reimbursing. A portion of those professional services cost for. And since that time, we received some updated direction. Um, and pulled those areas out. And so the city will no longer be paying for those. All the city's expenses will be related strictly, um, with the lender district. And MDC will be covering all other URD actions and research related to those upcoming actions.
You counsel any questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
For clarification, we can approve both the agreement and the amendment in the same action? Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I move that we approve the, uh, MOA. For the city of Meridian and the Meridian Development Corporation for Cost Sharing of the Urban Renewal District.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the MOA. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor. I abstained from that as well.
Okay. The, Mr. Borton abstained, noted for the record. Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move that we approve the, uh. Amended MOA, the city of Meridian and the Meridian Development Corporation for Cost Sharing for the Urban Renewal District Creation.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second for the amendment, the MOA, the MOA amended. Is there a discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Abstentions? Mr. Borton abstains. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening. Uh, next up will be our Parks and Recreation Department, Lakeview Golf Club operations update and fiscal year FY twenty-two budget discussion. Getting a preview of next week. Mr. Borden, or Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. So. Thank you for the opportunity this afternoon to talk to you about Lakeview Golf Club operations. I know there's been, um, several emails that you all get. And with, with people that have questions and hopefully we can shed some light on some of those as well as, um, some of the challenges going forward. Um, and the FY twenty-two operating budget as well. So basically the operating structure that we have currently is, um. Three, three people. Um, Ryan Roberts is the general manager. You know, I was going to try to have Ryan attend the meeting tonight. So I don't know if you've had a chance to. Uh, place a name with a face, but he's currently teaching some golf lessons right now. So he's, he's out there doing what he's supposed to be doing and that's, that's what we like. Yeah. And, and he's making money. So. That's good. Matt Allen with Kemper Sports was going to be on the call as well, but he's kind of, he's on vacation right now. He just got done coordinating a PGA. Tournament event at Band and Dunes, which was a junior four ball tournament championship. So. He kind of scheduled some time off. So anyway, things didn't align and of course I'm here. So between the three of us, we talk regularly and. That's our current operating structure. So. Roles and responsibilities. And I'm not going to read the entire list, but you can kind of see that. Ryan Roberts is the general manager. One of the, the, the most important thing that Ryan does is, uh, manage the day-to-day operations of the golf course. He's the guy onsite that is accountable to customers. He makes sure, he'd make sure that the, the doors are open in the morning, that things are closed. Um, he collects the daily receipts, makes bank deposits. All those things that, you know, the guy, the lead person on, onsite would do. And there's, there's a hierarchy amongst the staff. There's a, um, Ryan has an assistant that's a, um, he has a manager title, but, um. Chris Cooney and then, and of course we have a, um, new superintendent that we hired that will lead the maintenance operation. We've. Had that vacancy since April ninth and we've just filled that. So that's, that's really what Ryan does is he's the day-to-day guy who is onsite. Matt Allen with Kemper Sports. I know there was a lot of questions at the town hall with, you know, what is, what does Kemper do? And, um, really in a nutshell, the most important thing that Kemper does, uh, for the city is ensure accountability with the cash handling. Bank reconciliation, financial reporting associated with the funds that we've placed in those operating accounts. And the funds that we collect as revenue. At the golf course and the expenses that are paid. So they are the ones that are accountable for that financial reporting. And it needs to be done in such a way that a municipal auditor can. Sign off on it. But then as you go down the, down the list of, um, other things, you know, Kemper acts as the employee, does the HR. Manages the vendor accounts, maintains the licenses, insurance, uh, prepares the budget, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then the financial records that, um. Invoices, deposits, you know, the, the reconciliation that, that you all get monthly. Um, we, we get a monthly report of the financial health of the business and then we disseminate that out to city council members and the mayor. Um, and then, and then one thing that's very important to us is they do act as a consultant to the owner. So they, they manage over seventy municipal golf courses across the country. So, and that's. Those are just municipal courses. So they have a, um, equal number of private courses as well. So. As far as, um, I mean, they're a wealth of experience and, um, you know, when it comes to operations and they, they really know what they're doing. And then as far as what, what we do is, um, you know, one of the most important things I think that we do is that we, um. Provide the, the Lakeview customers a direct contact with city staff. And I know that, um, what we've heard and what's been communicated through our surveys and the master plan is that. Some of the, the previous, uh, conditions out there where customers would come to management with, uh, an issue or something. Uh, a question that they were fairly dismissive. And, you know, honestly, that's not what we, that's not what we're about. That's not our care values. And if somebody comes to us with a, a, um, a question or a complaint or an issue. We may, we may not be able to tell them what they want to hear, but we'll always call them back and we'll always have a conversation with them. So along with the other list of items that you can see, um, you know, I feel that the most important thing we, that we do as a department is. To provide that contact with city staff to the customers. And, and we get a fair amount of calls. I mean, I, I think that over time as things progress, that there may be fewer of those calls, but right now there's. Out of the blue, two, three, four a week that require follow-up. And I know, uh, Mr. Mayor, your office gets. A few and we get several to, you know, a handful a week in our department. So. Some of the accomplishments that we've, um. Worked on over the last seven months as we've completed the transition, we've retained the existing staff, which was very important. We did have some go just through transition and they found different opportunities, but I think that's going to happen with any business at any time. Regardless of whether it's transitioning or not, uh, there's going to be some turnover. There's been several deferred maintenance and capital items. We all know, we've heard stories about deferred capital investment, but there's a significant amount of deferred maintenance as well. Everything from parking lot maintenance to. Electrical outlets that were, you know, the GFCIs weren't tripping, causing a safety issue. I mean, we've gone through the, the place and, um. And there's, there's more to do, obviously, but, um. We are trying to be fuel efficient with the money that we have and, um, taking care of the worst items. And obviously the safety issues are first and our first priority. Now, I mentioned the new superintendent that's going to start next Monday. The course improvements, you know, we verified, we've, we've done some things that we can do short of, of heavy maintenance or capital investment. To improve course conditions. Uh, we want to, we, we want it to play as well as we can because we want to be able to compete for that. That daily fee market. I mean, we know that the, the residents in the area are. Very loyal to the course through our surveys and conversations, but we want to, we want to start to compete beyond that square mile. And one of the things we can do is keep the course in as good a condition as we possibly can without making those upgrades. Um, and, and we know that we do have some items that are in the CFP for future years that, um, for upgrades, we've talked about them and we'll talk about, we'll talk more about them. Next Tuesday and at budget hearings and, and beyond. So that will help as well. And one, one of the, one of the main things is that we've increased communication between the operation and the customers. Ryan Roberts has started meeting with, uh, Men's and Women's Association Weekly now. Those are the people that are very loyal to the golf course and. He may not have an update for him, but he's made himself available to answer questions and. You know, it's, it's. We, we've heard all sorts of rumors that this is going to happen and that's going to happen. And the best thing we can do is communicate as often as possible. And with as many people as we possibly can. So we reached those, um, those groups on a weekly basis. We also have been putting next door posts out at the direction of the mayor's office. We've, um, our volunteer coordinator, Chelsea, has started a golf marshal program at the course. That, um, if the golf marshals can get a golf benefit for volunteering, oh, it's not volunteering, but it, it is, but they get a golf benefit. And, and there's been, and, and they, they will put out a consistent message, message and, um. Help with some of the communication as well. One of the things that you know, we've been working on is the master plan and. We, um, we have a draft, received a draft CIP that we've, or a, a draft. we, we have a draft, received a draft CIP that we've, or a draft, actually a draft report, the whole report that we're going through. And we will request, we'll put our comments back into the National Golf Foundation. They'll clean it up. And then that will be distributed to you all for consumption and comment here shortly. The other thing that we have is the draft CIP that's ready for consumption. And it is, it is a draft. And like we've talked about before, there's things that we have to have, and there's things that you know, we should have. And then there's this other list that would, things that would be nice to have. And obviously, budgets are very tight and we, like I said, we're, we're as fuel efficient as we possibly can. And honestly, the, we appreciate them bringing up the nice to have items, but real realistically, those are so far in the future, if at all, that it's good to get on the list, though. So that will be, that will be coming out. Steve's going to send those out, the draft CIP with a memo later this week, I believe. Yeah. So some of the challenges that we we have, food and beverage is a challenge. Now, we've all heard stories about how the labor market has conspired against the hospitality industry and restaurants in particular. We continue to recruit staff, but the staff that that come in, we, we get a, we get an applicant and honestly, all applicants we we interview. When we interview them, they come in and and the posting says fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour. They come in and they want twenty five dollars an hour. It's twenty to twenty five dollars an hour because they know that that they can, if it's not Lakeview, it's somewhere else that may be willing to pay them. And Lakeview Golf Course honestly is not a destination restaurant. It's there to serve golfers and it really is, they're currently serving the neighborhood. We feel that it's important to get it operating beyond what it is right now. What it is right now is we offer turn stand food offerings, pre made sandwiches, wraps, hot dogs, packaged snacks. We still have a full offering of beverages. And just tonight, we, you know, historically have done Taco Tuesdays out there, which everybody is really popular. So we have Tony's Taco Truck is out onsite tonight for the first night. We're, we're hoping that they'll come back for Friday and Saturday and until we can get the labor market to stabilize and to stabilize the operation, we think that to have those turn stand offerings for food for golfers, full beverages, and then special events have food trucks. We think that's a pretty good model. Because honestly, we can't pay somebody twenty five dollars an hour and have the redundancy onsite that we need for the busy times. Because if you go there on a Wednesday afternoon at three o'clock and there's one or two people there, we can't have two, we can't have two cooks in the kitchen working with nothing to do, but we need those people there for the times that it's busy.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thanks. Just that I jump in, because it seems like a hot topic. I mean, like, the restaurant industry is notorious for being a very difficult, low margin business. You have to control a lot of inventory. You can't afford to pay people. I totally understand the challenges. My question to you is, are we considering outsourcing that to another provider? I don't know what the providers are like in this market and other markets I've lived. There are very high end companies that you could outsource that to. Is that something that we're considering?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader. When we initially were contemplating the trend, the transition, and we thought that the staff was going to be city staff. And we, we thought, oh, my gosh, we have no experience, absolutely no experience in a restaurant. So what do we do? I have an RFP that's written, ready to go, that we could advertise to try to get a concessionaire in there. Right now, I don't, I, I'm not sure, you know, if we get any favorable responses, because people are in the kind of in the same boat we are, maybe to a lesser extent, because they're not as sequestered inside that neighborhood. Where if you have a location on Eagle Road, you may have a little better chance at drawing visitors patrons in there. But it's definitely, it's been on our mind. And I think as we go forward and come to you and present the findings of the master plan, and we determine a model for long term operation, that I think that's one of the considerations that we should have.
You took the words out of my mouth. Long term operation model have to be developed and discussed.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
And along those lines, and I know you're not done with your presentation yet, but now that we've had the course for a few months, and and I know it's been a unique time to try to track you know, visitors to the, to the restaurant. Do we have a good idea of, you know, the population of people that are coming through and whether and and what kind of staffing we actually need now in relationship to maybe what it was like potentially pre COVID or, you know, summer versus winter. Do you feel like that, has Kemper been able to help with that? Or, I mean, as you're drafting this RFP, do we really have a good sense of what we need now? Because I know a lot that, a lot of that information we didn't have from the prior operator.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, that's another great question. We, we don't have finance, we, well, we have a little bit of financial history from the previous operator. The previous operator stated in that financial history that we did get that the food and beverage operation lost twenty five thousand dollars. That was in two thousand nineteen. So last year was COVID. We know that we've tried to run the kitchen with minimal staffing, didn't have good results because they were quickly overwhelmed. And we had somebody walk out halfway through prime rib night. And Ryan Roberts and some of the waitstaff jumped in the kitchen and took over and finished it off. So we, we need to, we, we know that we, we really, I think we really need to have a plan to, to change the hours of operation that we have. Before it was seven days a week, serving breakfast all the way until closing. And closing would vary depending on how busy it was. We can't do that. There just isn't, right now, in this inflationary, the inflationary pressures that we have right now, just with the cost of goods and the cost of labor, it has changed so much since two thousand nineteen that I don't see us going back to that model. But can we be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? And and serve hot food? Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
And and just to anybody who's watching this from Lakeview or anyplace else, no decisions have been made. These are just theoretical comments or things to be considered as we move forward. Councilman Pro.
And is that information that you would need in order to to interview and hire a concessionaire? Like, would you need to know this is approximately how many people we're serving? This is, obviously, we need another hour. So until you have that data, can we even be having conversations about talking to an outside company to come in and take over service?
Great, great question. And we, we, we need that information. And we would have to put that together. You know, as well as this is how much volume it does and expectations of hours of operation and here's how many staff we need and yeah, the the RFP that I wrote was, was pretty good, but it didn't have that. And we would absolutely need that. Thank you.
And if I could just add a little to that, I, I think the, the difficult challenge that we're going to have is if you, if you look at COVID and you look at the we, we've been shut down because we didn't have staff to even offer food. It's hard to get a good baseline for assumptions throughout all of this. And so while these are great conversations to have, we may not be able to provide this information for a year after we really get a labor market maybe reestablished if we, if we see that in the next three months. I don't know. So that, that, while Mike is telling you this to give you a preview, I'm going to continue to ask for latitude from the council for us to get enough data to even go and find someone in a reasonable fashion, once those decisions need to be made, whatever they are, from that standpoint. But, Councilman Pro.
So can Kemper help with that in terms of, obviously, if they're managing multiple courses, municipal courses around the country, can they tell us a guideline of this is ideally how many, you know, how many people you'd have through the door on, on any given week? And can, can they share with us information about what other municipal courses are doing? Are they having the same labor challenge? This is happening nationwide. So they having the same challenges? What are those courses doing? Can we get any guidance from them on that at all?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilwoman Pearl, they, they can. And they are having those challenges nationwide. I think that some of the best points of reference might be some of the other local municipal courses and what offerings they have. And they really cater to golfers. For the most part, if you go to Centennial Golf Course, they, they have only turn stand food and canned beverages. That's it. I know in Boise, Quail, Quail Hollow has a restaurant where you can get hot food, but they're only open from April till October sometime. Warm Springs has turn stand like a concession stand type thing. And I know that people expect more than that. So I guess we're, we're not ready to make a decision yet. We're actively hiring for the kitchen. We're hoping that the labor market stabilizes. We're hoping that the industry as a whole stabilizes going forward. But I wanted to let you know that we're doing all we can to offer full beverages, food trucks, food for golfers, that sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm just, I, I would just want to say, I'm sorry if I let us down a rabbit hole. Truly, because you're doing the right thing. You're focusing on first and foremost, making sure the golf course works well, making sure we're providing great customer service. All these decisions on outsourcing or not outsourcing and all that stuff will, will come later. It's just something to think about. I don't think council expects you to have the answers to those questions, but I appreciate what you're doing with the customers repairing those relationships that need to be repaired and frankly, just focusing on the fundamentals. And we'll get there. So I just wanted to say that because I'm sorry if I let, I let us down a little bit of a tangent and I didn't need to do that.
Okay.
Good conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
A question, Mike. Looking at the things that you're in charge of, I know you had a full time job before. So who's doing that one?
Working, working on it. Okay. We're working on it.
Yep, we're it, it it's fun.
You, we, we need to, with what we have on the horizon for the Parks Department, again, there, there are needs throughout the city and and this could be one more. Even if you look at what Mike's roles and responsibilities are, it would be potential with Discovery Park, Community Center, those conversations, golf course, pool, you can see that there are likely additional staffing needs to balance out where we go one way or the other in the Parks and Recreation Department and from Mike Sanity. He wants to golf there, not just work there.
And Mr. Mayor, actually, I did two weeks ago and it was fun. It was good.
Councilman Pro.
I appreciate Councilwoman Schrader's apology, but I, I think it is good for us to have this conversation to the extent that we're going into the really heavy season of the course. And I think this summer is going to be really telling for us from a budget standpoint and from the decisions we'll be making for the rest of the year as a council. So I think these detailed conversations are a good thing, even though there aren't decisions being made today. Because this is one of our biggest assets. So I appreciate these detailed conversations as liaison to Parks and Rec. So I'll just put that out there.
Mr. Mayor and Council. So moving on, you know, some other challenges, the deferred maintenance, we've talked about that and we, we know all about that. But we really wanted to bring forward a conversation about the FY twenty two operating budget that was put together by Kemper Sports and let you know that one of the things that we did is we wanted them to bring forward a conservative revenue budget and budget, worst case, for the unknown of expenses. And a result of that, as a result of that direction, they put together a budget that has a two hundred and forty thousand dollar operating loss. But for, just for context, the, the revenue in April is twenty six thousand dollars, just for April, is twenty six thousand dollars higher than the FY twenty two budget that we put together. So again, we wanted to be conservative with the revenue. Because we don't have reliable financial history. We know that in some regards, two thousand twenty was during COVID, the golf industry as a whole saw pretty sizable bump in play. And we, we drew back, we, we drew back down on that. So the FY the F, two thousand nineteen, there was approximately thirty thousand rounds. And last year, there was thirty nine thousand rounds. So pretty good revenue. And it doesn't mean that those are daily, daily walk up fee players. They could be pass holders. So there's a difference in the rate they play at. But we've lowered that that estimate by four thousand rounds. So and it'll come across, it'll, that'll come from all levels of play, whether a pass holder or a walk up, you know, a daily fee player. So that is, that is conservative. We don't want to stand here and tell you that everything's going to be great. We're making a ton of money and then fall short of that. We want to manage expectations. We want you to have information that you need to prepare for what maybe what the worst case scenario is. I mean, if we did have really reliable financial history, we could have a better handle on what the income is, what the revenue is and what the expenses are. The way we had to come up with the on the expense side was benchmarking from our neighbors in Napa and Boise to see what their municipal golf courses cost.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I actually wanted to ask a little bit, you know, I saw the eleven percent drop in rounds, a sort of conservative estimate that, you know, this COVID bump was kind of a one time thing. But, I mean, on the other hand, I would say, you know, new investments in the golf course should drive increased demand. Better customer service should drive increased demand. I mean, is that really more of a downside case? If, if revenue stayed flat, if we had golf staying at the same amount of rounds as, as we're seeing now in April, and you carried that forward seasonally, would we still be looking at a two hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit? Or do we have some upside? Yeah, what kind of upside do we have on that number?
Yeah, that's a good question. I just, my personal opinion, I think there's tremendous upside. And I, and I think April has proved that. Because where we've forecasted, like I said, it was a conservative estimate for revenue and April was twenty four thousand dollars higher in revenue, just for one month.
Yeah, it seems, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
It seems really encouraging, right? I mean, just based on those most recent results. So let's, let's hope that that's more of a downside scenario. I, I appreciate you want to be conservative. I get it. You want to, you know, over deliver and and everything, but it did seem really really, really conservative.
And Councilwoman Schrader, I, I, I agree with you. Just so you know, I mean, I, I had a real struggle with the number, but I'm going with it since we don't have data. In, in other words, and I, I firmly believe the previous operator did not suffer that kind of a loss. Couldn't have done it for ten years and stayed in business, regardless of wearing the same pair of shoes and running the kitchen themselves. There are other costs that have had to be increased through Kemper in order just to have labor there now. So there are some additional costs, but again, one year conservative. again, one year conservative estimate, but if this was going to be the ongoing expectations, we have a lot bigger conversations. Mr. Sidaway.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Schrader, the one piece of context that I wanted to add, because I I am fairly comfortable with that number. And I don't know that it's overly conservative because let's not forget, we're talking 22 and plan to have the golf course torn up for irrigation improvements for part of that year. So that will have an impact on the number of rounds that that can and will be played. So that I don't know what the impact will be standing here now, but it will have an impact.
Got to invest before it can get better. We know that.
Yep. And that's that's to that point. One of the, one of the key findings of the master plan is that we need to do, we need to advertise outside the square mile area that it currently draws from and it and create more of a destination and that's going to be better playing conditions. And we can't do that now because we don't want to invite people there only to be disappointed. Let's get it fixed.
Council, I know you didn't get to the the operating recommendations, but I think we covered them on that standpoint. Any additional questions for Mike or Steve at this point in time on where we're, what you'll be seeing next week? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Council, do we want to take a quick break before we get into the last item? I know Vincent doesn't plan to be long. I don't know how long you all plan on being Vincent. Vincent, go ahead and come on up. With that, item 20, Mayor's Office Strategic Plan Update.
I was gonna say good afternoon, but it's good evening. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm here to discuss the implementation and execution of our adopted strategic plan. And this is a follow up to when we adopted our focus areas and goals back in December, I committed to you that I would share with our with you our strategies and that would be helping to define the work of our strategic plan. I sent you a memo a couple of weeks ago that was full of great information and strategies as well as some of the information about the next steps. And with that, I'll talk about some of our agenda. I did. I did find it a little serendipitous that we talked about some of the strategies in the items that preceded me. So in the strategic plan. So with that, I'll talk a little more about the agenda. So tonight I'll be talking with you about how we'll continue to execute and implement our plan, how we'll communicate and engage with you and our citizens in the future and how we will be accountable and share results with our community. So brief recap of what occurred when we last talked about the strategic plan. During 2020, our city leadership developed and our council adopted our 2021 to 2025 strategic plan, which consisted of our vision, mission, focus areas and goals. With that clear direction in January of 2021, our departments began to brainstorm the work that will allow us to accomplish our goals through the strategies that I've shared with you. Those strategy have been has strategies have been reviewed by our director team and Mayor Simison and have now been completed. A little about the plan execution. So developing strategies and tactics will define the work that will occur over the next one to five years of the plan. The strategies that our departments were empowered to develop will represent the broad work that will occur to accomplish our strategic goals. Yearly, we will review and revise our strategies to stay flexible and nimble, which is one of the one of the changes that we wanted to have happen with this with this new plan. The tactics that will be completed, which are in progress with departments and will be in progress with city council are the specific actions that our staff will take along with the anticipated timelines and measurements of success for the plan. Our tactics will really make up the bulk of the work in the plan and will really make our plan come to life through the actions and activities of the strategic plan. This will empower departments, our city council, our teams to tie the work directly to the plan because they are the ones that are creating it. And how will we keep city council to continue to be involved? As we've developed the plan, I've taken feedback from city council as well as departments on work that will require action from council. There are several topics that I will work with the council body to brainstorm, explore and create tactics just as the departments are doing right now. The tactics of interest are highlighted in the slide and are aligned with the strategies that were created. Departments will also collaborate with city council on the direction on programs to support our plans, goals and strategies. They will come to you to support their requests on budget, policy and code, which are all aligned with the work they will do and the dollars we appropriate to support the adopted plan. We want and need our city council to be active and engaged in the execution of our plan. And as part of my effort to stay to keep the plan moving, continuously improve and being flexible, going to keep the lines of communication open. Do you have a commitment from me that I will communicate to council through key quarterly updates via memo? You've already seen one of those. Commitment to communicate biannually via presentation of progress and departmental requests, doing that right now. A commitment to communicate annually on updates to strategies based on changes in policy, legislative actions, funding or technology changes. We will commit to updating our community through a transparency page, which I'll show you in a second. We will also reinforce our adopted strategic plan through a theming of events, programs and activities and actions by our associated six focus areas. We will engage with the community through public listening tours, town halls, survey engagement and other opportunities. And accountability, we will stay accountable to our plan through our website. This will be the primary point of contact with our community, our staff and council for our plan. It will allow people to view progress compared with our citizen survey metrics as well as any performance indicators that our departments develop with the work as they develop their strategies and tactics. It will provide a platform for us to highlight departmental actions and initiatives related to our strategic plan. It will also allow us to be transparent and responsive to the needs of our community. So if you want, we can take a look around. I clicked on it. Should open up a webpage. Yeah. Perfect. So this webpage, the mouse is just really slow. Webpage is modeled after the comprehensive plan page. It has our vision, mission, and I was going to highlight this mouse just keeps. Maybe I won't show you the adopted remote. Maybe I won't show you the strategic plan page.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Vince.
Councilman Holden.
Is this up now that we can we can view it? Okay.
Yeah, if you want, you can. You can look at it yourselves on the on the page. So sure. But essentially it has the adopted vision, mission, focus areas and the adopted plan and also has the ability to, that opened up. It also has the ability to see the strategies and our goals and will continue to be updated as departments develop. Oh, that's the that's the plan document. You can close that out. And it will continue to be updated as we develop relevant performance measures. And as departments develop their tactics, we will update the strategies and the tactics associated with the departmental actions and initiatives. So this will be a great platform to be able to show the progress we're making to be able to be transparent with our community on progress we're making throughout the plan. So that's that's what I look to do with it and continue to use as we move forward over the next one to five years. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Vincent. At least the one thing we had, I didn't know tactics were going to be on this page. I thought I was just going to start it, stop at the document that was presented to council, which really highlights, you know, the the main goals and objectives through that standpoint, but it may not say writing letter to ITV requesting funding for something because those are the tactics and that that is the boots on the ground. So I don't know that you're going to see that level of details on this page. That's a lot of.
No, and the and the tactics won't live on that page. They they might, we might highlight some of the activities that are underneath the strategies that would be relevant for our community. But you won't see individual tactics and action items from the departments that probably will get a little too granular and too in the weeds. But but yeah, so as departments develop their their work, the work that's important to be highlighted that our that our community needs to know about and wants to know about and cares about will probably be highlighted on that page.
Thank you, Vincent. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
So I feel like the the tactics are the how we get there piece. And I I understand that might not be appropriate for a wider audience and like really granular detail. But so will you be provide, how will council get updated on the tactical aspects of what we're doing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, Members of Council. The way that I anticipate updating the tactics or updating the specific actions is via memo or via the presentation. So that's where I'm going to, I'm going to be that fill essentially that filter to get the information from the departments. I might come up here with a department to say, hey, here's some of that relevant information. Here's some of the relevant actions we're going to take. That that might include having a budgetary conversation, having a policy conversation, having a code based conversation with city council where that's in your purview. I also outlined on there, there are several topics that I will also engage with city council on where you would be developing tactics. And I've said that all along throughout the creation of the plan. Council has and should have a role, you know, where their purview exists in the actions and the tactics in this plan. But I hope that answers your question, Councilman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you so much, Vincent. And I really appreciate your inclusion of council and involvement. And just like the brainstorming and those regular updates, because I do think it's really great that we've been so involved in the plan and and would look forward to collaborating. Thanks.
And maybe a good example, if we want to talk about something that maybe was in an email you sent the other day, such as creating the citywide environmental plan. So that would either occur through a budget amendment that you would find out about the tactics or conversations at a point in time where we don't do a budget amendment and we develop an in house and the draft is presented. So it's going to vary, you know, from time to time, from that standpoint, on what that looks and feels like based upon resource needs or other allocations or quite frankly, it may sit there and there not be any tactics because resources don't currently exist. You know, from that standpoint, to take on everything at once. So it's going to vary on every piece within the plan in the departments. You lose a staff member, maybe you don't focus on that item. So it's not, it's not perfect science.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Vincent, I'm going to echo Councilmember Schrader's comments about council member inclusion. I think it's really, really important. Perhaps a suggestion, maybe we've talked about this before, but if not, perhaps we look at having focus area liaisons, their city council. I think that allows us to kind of each have a little bite of the apple, allows the council to work collaboratively with each other. Allow maybe some of those ideas to bubble at the top that sometimes doesn't always come from those that are within the building. And then just a request in light of time, I'd like to get some more information about utility cost of service study. Maybe a timeline with that's all going to encompass that may not be ready for prime time now, but that's a piece that I'm I'm very, very interested in. And then just some better understanding about the the streetscape and community character work group that ties obviously with streetlights and plans. I know that's something that council's been really interested in and and getting a little bit better understanding how that work group is going to incorporate. That would be helpful. Sure. Appreciate it.
This is the cost of service study that is just working this way. I think, you know, I think our CFO just sat down with the initial feedback on that. So it's coming. Council, anything else for Vincent? Right. Thank you, Vincent. And what I'll do is I'll ask Vincent to work with the council president on the items listed, determine whether those are done via workshop here or one off or how to move forward on those things council indicated desire to except I know not each one of you had a desire to do each one of those. But those were the collective group identified by all members. So okay, thank you, Vincent. So with that, we are on to item 21, ordinance number 211930, was clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to H 20200074 TM crossing for a rezon of parcels, parcels of land situated in a portion of section 14, township three north, range one west, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing determining the land use zoning classifications of as follows. Forty point nine eight acres of from the R forty and CC zoning districts to the CG zoning district, 3.9 acres from the TNC and CG zoning districts to the R forty zoning district, 0.65 acres from the R eight and TNC zoning districts to the CG zoning district and 0.53 acres from the TNC zoning district to the CG zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Cork. Council, you've heard the item read by title. Was there anybody that liked it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move the adoption of ordinance number 21 dash one nine three zero with suspension of rules.
Second.
Have a motion a second to approve the ordinance under suspension of rules. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signified by saying I.
I.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Ordinance is agree to. Last item is executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho code seven four dash two zero six one B.
I have a motion a second to go into executive sessions. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden, Cavanagh, Perrow, Schrader, Hoagland.
Hi. All ayes, motion carries, and we will move into executive session.